Whoever is going to start the staff presentation on the home initiative, I'll recognize you.
Yes, Assistant City Manager Veronica Bucino.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Veronica Bucino, Assistant City Manager. Happy to be here with you today. Today's staff will be presenting to you an update on the home initiative. As you know, this is something that we have been working on for the past several months. It is following through with the council policy and priorities. We now are here before you with Planning Commission recommendations as well. We've heard numerous points of view as we've gone through this process, all of them legitimate, and staff has worked tirelessly tirelessly to bring this forward to you. So I would like, as a personal point of privilege, take the opportunity to thank our staff, our multiple departments.
Yes.
You'll see a handful of them here today, but just know they stand before many. So, thank you to our staff for your efforts. We'll give a brief presentation. We want to update you on where we are now from the last time we were before you, about a month ago, followed by our staff presentation. We will hear from AIA, the American Institute of Architects, who will present modeling on what potential scenarios could look like with these amendments. We look forward to hear from you, any potential council amendments that you'll be bringing forward. This will allow us the time, before we get to our meeting next week, to take those amendments and draft some language that you have something to consider on December 7th. We also encourage you to continue to use the question and answer portal. Hopefully, this has been beneficial to you. It has to us. We've had about 100 questions so far. And again, staff is working hard to provide you the information that you need to make these important decisions. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Director over planning, Andrea Bates, and she will walk us through this presentation.
If you don't mind, what we might do is, we now have a quorum of the Water Oversight Committee, so just before you start, and we might take care of that and get that out of the way. And without objection, I'll recess the work session of the Austin City Council. Councilmember Poole, if you can get that. And then I'll call back to order the Austin City Council for the work session. It is 9:11 a.m., and we will go back to where we were with staff making our presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. I'm Andrea Bates, Assistant Director for the Planning Department. I'll be giving an overview of the proposed changes to residential uses and standards in the Land Development Code, including the code amendments related to the home initiative. Council received a full overview of this proposal during the joint meeting with the Planning Commission on October 26th. So I'll be focusing on some of the changes that Planning Commission recommended when they reviewed the proposal on November 14th. The proposed code amendments respond to the direction set by three recent council resolutions. As a refresher, this proposal would do the following. It will allow up to three homes on property zoned, single-family or SF1, SF2, and SF3. It would simplify some of the existing regulations for building two homes. It would remove some accessory uses that are no longer needed in the code with the other changes. It would limit the applicability of the standards in Subchapter F, which are often called the McMansion standards, to lots with only one home. It would allow tiny homes that meet certain standards to be considered a dwelling unit, and it would remove the limit on the number of unrelated adults allowed to live together. Some of the primary goals for these code amendments are to create more housing options that are affordable to middle-income earners, to give homeowners options to house a family member or to earn passive income on their property, to increase housing supply, and to promote smaller, more energy-efficient homes. Some of the requirements that apply to SF1, SF2, and SF3 properties today would continue to apply under the proposal. For example, a property might have site-specific constraints like protected trees or other limitations like deed restrictions or HOA restrictions that may limit the number of units that can be built on that site. All three zones would still have the 35-foot height limit for the zone, and building cover and impervious cover limits would continue to apply. This is an overview of the code amendment process. As you know, there'll be three public hearings on these proposed amendments. The first was the joint meeting of the Planning Commission and City Council on October 26th. On November 6th, staff held an open house for members of the public to learn more about the proposal. On November 14th, the second public hearing was held at the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission voted to recommend that council approve the proposal with a variety of amendments. And finally, the council will hold a public meeting, a public hearing, at a special-called meeting on December 7th. The Planning Commission recommended 22 amendments to the proposal when they reviewed it on November 14th. I will highlight some of their proposed amendments in this presentation, but the full list is available online. It is posted as backup both for the November 14th Planning Commission meeting and for the December 7th council meeting. The first Planning Commission recommendation is to set a floor-to-area ratio maximum for two- and three-unit developments within the McMansion area. A floor-to-area ratio, or FAR maximum, is a way to regulate the mass or the volume of a building on a site. It is calculated by dividing the total floor area of the building or buildings by the area of the site itself. As a very simple example, a 10,000-square-foot building on a 10,000-square-foot site has an FAR of 1. A 5,000-square-foot building on a 10,000-square-foot height, site, excuse me, has an FAR of .5. A 2,500-square-foot building on a 5,000-square-foot height also has an FAR of .5. So if you have an FAR maximum, a set ratio, the size of the building that you can build depends on the size of the site. You take the site size times the ratio, and that's the size of the square footage of the building allowed under the FAR maximum. So the Planning Commission recommended FAR maximums for two- and three-unit developments in the McMansion area, which is the area shown in brown in the map on the slide. They recommended a layered approach, an FAR maximum for all of the buildings on a site, as well as FAR maximums that apply to the largest individual unit, that regulate the size of the largest unit on the site, and for a three-unit development, an FAR maximum that limits the size of the largest two buildings. This distributes the square footage among the buildings on the site. The reason behind this layered approach, or setting a maximum FAR for the largest unit, is to close a potential loophole and ensure that you can't develop one huge unit and two tiny units, like a giant house and two tiny pool houses that aren't really intended for occupancy. So the goals of having an FAR maximum are to delimit the size of the individual units while still encouraging the development of multiple units on one site by giving additional FAR for properties with additional units. Both of these goals support the direction in the council resolution. This table does some of the math for us. It calculates the total square footage of development that can be built under three different FAR limits for three different lot sizes. The purpose of this is to convert the FAR limit, which is abstract, to the potential size of a building in square feet, which many people have a better sense for. So let's break that down and start with the three FAR limits you see. In today's code, residential development in the McMansion area has an FAR limit of .4. That .4 maximum would continue to apply to single-unit development in the McMansion area, but it would not apply to two or three units. The proposal that you saw on October 26th did not have an FAR maximum for two or three units. The Planning Commission recommended a .55 FAR maximum for two units and a .65 FAR maximum for three units, per site. That would be the total amount of development for all three units, or two units, on the site. So lot sizes. This table includes three different lot sizes to show you what those FAR maximums would translate to for different lots in town. The 5,750-square-foot lot is the minimum lot size for SF2 and SF3 zones. 8,000 square feet is the average lot size, and 10,000 square feet is the minimum lot size for SF1. But the point of the table is to calculate the total square footage allowed under the different FAR maximums. So I'm going to focus on an 8,000-square-foot lot because it's the average lot size. So under the current McMansion standards, a single unit on an 8,000-square-foot lot could be 3,200 square feet in size of gross floor area, so a 3,200-square-foot house. Under the Planning Commission proposal, a two-unit development could have 4,400 square feet of floor area, and a three-unit development could have 5,200 square feet of floor area. So that's FAR. The Planning Commission also recommended some design standards be added to the proposal. The recommendations include standards for entryways, driveways, and garage placement that would apply some existing code provisions to two- and three-unit developments. Staff recommends that we start with these, but then reassess design standards after a comprehensive analysis and additional modeling during Phase 2. The first recommendation is that the entryway of at least one unit on a multi-unit site must face the street. This is to help activate the street front by ensuring that at least one front door faces the street. The second recommendation is to limit the amount of pavement that can be in the front yard area. The area between the front lot line and the building line can have no more than 40% impervious cover. That minimizes the impact of driveway or driveways and helps create a more pedestrian-friendly neighborhood. The third recommended design standard relates to where a garage or carport is located in relation to the house. A garage cannot be located closer to the street than the front of the house. It can't be in front of the front of the house. And the width of the garage is limited if it is not at least 20 feet behind the front of the house. This minimizes the visual impact of garages, and again, helps create a more pedestrian-friendly neighborhood. Next, the Planning Commission recommended adding something called a preservation bonus to the proposal. The purpose of the preservation bonus is to help maintain older, potentially more affordable housing stock, to help preserve the look of existing neighborhoods from the street, and to reduce demolitions and keep housing materials out of the landfill. A development could use the preservation bonus if it preserves a structure built in 1960 or earlier. Preservation, in this case, means preservation of 100% of the facade or the front of the structure and preservation of at least 50% of the existing structure. So all of the facade and at least 50% of the structure as a whole. If those requirements are met, the preserved square footage does not count towards the FAR limit of the site. Staff has some implementation concerns regarding the preservation bonus. If it is used on a wide scale, it could impact the review processes in the Development Services Department. We are looking at it currently and working on an approach, but there are several challenges that we are still working through at this time. The Planning Commission also recommended a companion sustainability bonus. The goals are very similar: to maintain existing, potentially more affordable housing stock, to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions caused by new construction by reusing existing housing stock, and reducing demolitions and keeping housing materials out of the landfill. The sustainability bonus applies to more recent development than the preservation bonus. A development qualifies if it preserves a structure that is at least 20 years old but built after 1960, which is that threshold for the preservation bonus. And the preservation standards are a little simpler. It simply requires preserving at least 50% of the existing structure. There's not that emphasis on the front facade. It's just any 50% of the existing structure. And if that requirement is met, the incentive is that the square footage of the preserved area does not count towards the FAR limit on the site. I will quickly mention a few of the Planning Commission's other recommendations. They recommend that some garage space be exempt from the FAR maximums, which is similar to how the calculation is currently performed under the McMansion standards. They recommend that the previously included 1,100-square-foot size limit for the second unit in a detached two-unit development be removed. This would be replaced by the suggested FAR limits for the two- and three-unit developments. They recommend some changes to front, rear, and street-side yard setbacks to allow additional flexibility. The front setback could be averaged based on nearby existing building setbacks. So if your neighbor's houses are closer to the front of the street, your house could potentially be closer to the front of the street. The rear setback could be reduced in certain conditions, like if the property is adjacent to an alley or a non-residential use. And then they recommended that the street-side yard setback be reduced to 10 feet on corner lots for these properties with multiple units. All of these recommendations would apply only to lots with two or three units. They would not apply to lots with one unit. And finally, the Planning Commission recommended that these changes become effective 60 days after final adoption to allow time to prepare for implementation. We continue to encourage the community to visit the project website to learn more about the proposal and to stay up to date as it continues through the review process. The website includes a summary of the proposal and the draft code language. It includes a video of staff's presentation from October 26th, which went into more detail on the original proposal and the difference between today's code and the changes. The website includes answers to frequently asked questions and provides information on how to provide input and how to protest the changes. Community members can submit questions or comments to staff via the website or via the email or phone number that are on the screen. We are responding to questions, and any comments submitted were provided to the Planning Commission and will be provided to council for your consideration. Thank you very much. That concludes our presentation.
And Mayor, I just, yeah, and Andrea was being perhaps more subtle than I would like. There are some recommendations that were made by the Planning Commission that when we do the analysis between now and the 7th of December, you may find us saying that we don't think those are consistent or compatible with the goals and objectives set out by council. We don't have that list done today. I think we agree with most of them, but there are some that are problematic, and we'll explain why they're problematic prior to you because you'll take that ordinance with all its amendments, and we'll be asking you to think through whether you'd want to amend or accept those amendments given those constraints that we may be able to explain, so.
Great, thank you. Members, we, hang on a second. What we're going to do is allow for some questions, and then we're going to have a presentation from AIA, as I understand it, and then we'll allow for questions then. You may want to hold your questions until after the AIA presentation, but that's up to you. Whatever you want to do, whatever the council members want to do. And then I will ask that we do, if you have amendments that you know you're going to present next week as part of this, we had discussed that we would try to lay those out at this meeting and so that people would at least know what everybody was kind of thinking about some of those things. Councilmember Allison Alter.
Thank you. I'll hold most of my questions till after the AIA presentation, but I did want to get further clarification from the city manager on the timing of when we would be seeing the staff recommendations.
I mean, I think we're working through, we're waiting for the discussion for today, and then we're doing the analysis now. There are some that are, we're analyzing now in terms of where we would land. We don't have that done yet, but you'll see it in the proper standard in terms of, we'll get it to you when it is we set the agenda for the 7th, with plenty of time for you to review what those recommendations are.
Okay, well, the agenda's already out for the 7th, and it's nine days away, and there are, you know, I'm just trying to understand when we can expect this because these are very, you know, important.
My guess is by Friday.
Okay, I, thank you.
Mayor, Council Trish Link with the Law Department. The, I've done a mini-code version, so our informal version has been submitted to the Agenda Office, so it can be posted as soon as the Agenda Office is ready to do that. And then the formal ordinance we will have to the Agenda Office by Thursday morning at the very latest.
Thank you. Why don't we have the presentation from AIA?
Good morning, council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Lucy Beg, and I'm an architect here on behalf of AIA Austin's Housing Advocacy Committee. We're a group of practicing architects working on housing at all scales and income levels in the city with a lot of experience of how Austin zoning codes impact what types and sizes of homes we build. We've spent many hours modeling the potential outcomes of the Home Phase 1 draft and are here this morning to share the recommendations that have emerged from those efforts. We're actually going to present the same material as we did at the Planning Commission hearing, but also include some commentary as it relates to the amendments that were proposed by Planning Commission. And if it's been touched on by staff, I'll kind of skip over that. Our group is motivated by our shared frustrations with the limits that current residential zoning imposes on housing choices in our neighborhoods, particularly when it comes to smaller homes. We applaud the intent of the Home Initiative to address these issues and are eager to make sure the details of the policy work in support of its goals. So let's talk about home sizes. Prior to the adoption of our current zoning standards in 1984, homes in Austin averaged around 1,500 square feet in size, and almost 1 in 5 of those were part of a duplex, triplex, or fourplex. After our current zoning was put in place, restricting large areas of the city to single-family homes on big lots, those unit sizes began to increase. This chart shows how the average home built since 1990 is almost 50% larger than the average built prior, and how just a fraction of those, less than 3%, have been within two, three, or four-unit buildings. This slide shows the number and sizes of houses permitted in the last decade in Austin. Over 75% of the new homes built in our neighborhoods in that time exceeded 2,000 square feet in size, almost directly in opposition to the ratio prior to 1990. We are actually adding homes greater than 5,000 square feet to our housing stock at a faster rate than homes under 1,000 square feet. This phenomenon is being driven by the collision of our 1980s zoning standards with today's high land costs. While our minimum residential lot size is 5,750 square feet, as staff pointed out, our median lot size is much larger, at almost 8,000 square feet. Older neighborhoods tend to have averages below that, while neighborhoods built out after 1950 tend to have lots larger than average. With entitlements limited to two dwelling units on most residential lots and with many restrictions on the size and configuration of the second unit, the most common development outcome today is a single house that's as large as possible, up to 40% of the lot size, to make the economics work. Put simply, our current residential zoning has a big-house bias, producing units that on average are 2,800 square feet today. At the same time, what housing options have we been editing out of our neighborhoods? Our unit restrictions and setbacks make it impossible to build developments like this one that was constructed in my neighborhood of East Cesar Chavez in 1926 and renovated a few years ago. These three livable small houses on a 9,600-square-foot lot each have a front porch, a small private backyard, and an off-street parking space. They're owned by a young couple, a single dad, and an elderly retiree who all enjoy the benefits of our high-quality neighborhood life. In area, they total the same square footage that today you would only be allowed to build as one or maximum two houses. To meet the Home Initiative's goal of giving smaller homes like these a bigger chance in Austin, we believe the details are critical, and the following are our recommendations about how the Home Ordinance should be fine-tuned to better meet its goals. And this is where I'll include our commentary on the PC amendments. So our first recommendation was to further increase the flexibility within the two-unit use. And this was, we've done a lot of that already in the text with the reduction of lot sizes for duplexes, removal of a common wall mandate, loosening of ADU location requirements. We further recommended that the 1,100-square-foot cap that applies to detached second units be removed, and Planning Commission captured that in their amendments. Our second recommendation was to create a new floor-area ratio tool for two- and three-units, and this had several components to it. The first was to create an FAR cap for each use, and again, staff talked you through the Planning Commission amendments that capture that. And the second was to incentivize construction of two- and three-units by modestly increasing the total allowable FAR for more units. And again, Planning Commission captured that in their amendments of graduating from 0.55 for two units to 0.65 for three units, and that followed our recommendations. To set a maximum size limit for a single unit, again, that was captured in Planning Commission amendments. We do have one very small detail to comment on there. Planning Commission have recommended that within three-unit uses, the two-unit max be limited to 0.5 rather than 0.55. We think that's an unnecessary complexity and that it should just be kept at 0.55. And then finally, we recommended including garages and carports in the floor area definition. And this is where we're at odds with what Planning Commission has recommended in their amendments. And it's, it's a little bit tricky, so bear with me as I try and explain our position. So currently, Subchapter F includes parking structures, garages, and carports in their definition of floor area, but they provide some exemptions. And those exemptions are 450 square feet for a detached garage in the rear of the property or 200 square feet for an attached garage that's within the structure. However, when we take two- and three-unit uses out of Subchapter F, we use the city's general floor area definition, and that excludes parking structures altogether. So if we just use the city's floor area definition, then garages and carports would be exempt from the FAR limit. And we think that would increase the amount of built area on the site and incentivize auto-centric development. So we're against that. What Planning Commission did is they took the Subchapter F exemptions, 450 square feet for detached garages, 200 for attached, but they've applied it on a per-unit basis rather than a per-site basis. So essentially, what they're granting, they're proposing to grant is greater parking structure exemptions than Subchapter F currently allows. We're opposed to that for a couple of reasons. We think that works against the goals of the Home Ordinance to produce smaller structures. And we actually already captured those parking exemptions in our proposed gradient of 0.55, 0.65. Those were meant to factor in those areas of garages. And a couple of other things, reasons we're opposed to that is we think it works against the goal of simplifying permitting processes. We know that getting rid of the Subchapter F helps really free up review time for exemptions. This creates additional exemptions that have to be documented and reviewed. And like I said, it reinforces the bias towards auto-centric design. It incentivizes developers who build garages, but gives no equivalent entitlements for those who want to be incentivizing car-free or car-light lifestyles. And finally, I'll get to this in a second, we think it removes some of the teeth of the preservation. the preservation incentive by giving increased floor area entitlements that make it harder to get above that with the preservation incentive. I know that's a lot of information, so we're very happy to kind of follow up with questions. We support relaxing front yard and street-side yard setbacks, and that's to just give more area to be able to accommodate the configuration of multiple units. What Planning Commission has suggested is allowing for front yard averaging, which is what Subchapter F does. We would prefer to just have a single reduced front yard setback of 15 feet. Front yard averaging is a very tricky, expensive process that involves surveying and additional costs, and depends on what your four neighbors happen to be. We think it would be simpler just to reduce the front yard to 15 feet. The street-side yard right now is 15 feet. Planning Commission proposed reducing that to 10. We think that could go to 5 feet without any negative impacts on neighborhood design. And finally, our fourth recommendation was to adopt a preservation incentive. Planning Commission amendments have done that. That was mostly designed by Preservation Austin, and we support that. We will caution that because we've got increased entitlements for three units of 0.65, it is going to be challenging to get additional floor area while keeping existing structures without increasing impervious cover. And again, unfortunately, we don't have any graphics of that, but I think the best thing that you could do to give the preservation incentive more teeth would be to allow a bit more impervious cover. And one thing we'd also love staff to clarify is whether, as we understand it, the preservation incentive would allow an additional unit, four units. I didn't see them mention that in their presentation, so that would be great to clarify. I'm going to pass it over to my colleague, Chris Gannon, just to get into some of our details a little more. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Chris Gannon. Thank you for your time this morning. I am the incoming co-chair of AIA's Housing Group. I'm going to jump right in to briefly look at some changes that Portland has taken. This is Portland's residential infill project and some graphs that we got from their one-year report. Their residential infill project is very similar to the Home Initiative. They're allowing a new missing middle housing typology, and those are the ones that have been in decline, that Lucy looked at, since the 90s. They're allowing ADUs all the way up to six plexes, so it's a little bit more intensive than what we're doing. The year following the adaptation of this policy saw a dramatic uptick in the construction of this middle housing, with nearly three-quarters of the units in four plexes. That's what this graph here is showing. So Portland added an FAR cap to their single-family homes as well, and they stepped that FAR .1 per unit, which is what we're looking at as well. We looked most closely at their R7 lots, as they're most aligned with Austin's lot So under this program, they found that by increasing the FAR .10 per added unit, they were able to both encourage more units, and those units on average were smaller. In their report, they have some interesting numbers. I encourage everyone to look at this report. The lot size, or the unit sizes under this one, their program versus the units being sold outside of it, were on average about $100,000 less. We didn't do any financial modeling in our stuff because we're architects and we're looking more at form, but that's an interesting and helpful metric to look at. So our modeling, which was independent of Portland's report, found that the same thing. An FAR cap with a gradient would incentivize more units, and on average, these units would be smaller. I want to note that Portland does include garages in their FAR, so that's an important thing to remember. Okay, so we looked at several gradient increases, and we believe that the .10 works for Austin. Ours starts at .55 for two units and goes to .65 for three. This is crucial to understand that under Subchapter F, our single-family homes are capped at .4, but what's actually being built is, on average, .45. And that's to accommodate the, all the exemptions that are built into the McMansion ordinance. That's an attic exemption, that's the garage exemptions, and the basement exemption as well. So looking at the data, the average single-family home is being built around .45. We stepped it up .1 from that. So the .55 and the .65 includes the exemptions previously granted under Subchapter F. So we modeled what this might look like. The first, the first model right there is a single-family home, and that's the .4 plus the exemptions that are granted on our Subchapter F. So you get about .45. The next two models are the .1 step up from that, so .55 and .65. If we were to include the Subchapter F garage exemption into two and three units, we would not be getting .55 and .65 anymore. On an average lot size, we would be getting closer to .60 for two units and .73 for triplexes. That's with the 200 square foot of additional garage space that's built into that. So we, like Lucy said, we support capping the FAR of a single unit in a multi-unit development. As without this guardrail, we might see stealth McMansions. That's kind of what this model is showing. That's that, it's like a tiny pool cabana with one giant house. The cap on two units, we could see that being helpful if someone was to design a three-unit development and then decide to only build two, but we think that that cap for three units should be .55, just to align with the cap on the two unit. And we support the Preservation Austin's recommendations for the preservation incentive. It's a delicate incentive, and really dialing in the cap on the two and three units will help bolster what preservation is doing, which I think is an important and meaningful issue here. We do support reducing the setbacks and encourage our resolution to go further than the front yard averaging. It can be expensive and time-consuming, like what Lucy was describing, and it relies on luck. If your neighbors are built close to the yard, then you get it. If your neighbors are not, then you don't get it. Historically, houses were close to the lot line, and also, the utilities are typically closer to the street as well. So we'd be reducing the distance to sewer lines. We would like to see the front yards reduced to 15 feet, and street-side yards reduced to five, to allow for greater flexibility in placing the additional units. And we'd like to see all properties get this benefit, not just the ones in older neighborhoods. This will be simpler to implement. It will spread the benefit more equitably, and it'll encourage development patterns to reflect the traditional central Austin neighborhoods. Finally, we do need to see that parking structures are included in the definition of FAR. The .05 bump from .4 for the single-family home is reflective of actual current conditions that include construction of garages. We are not removing this far, but we're asking for more freedom of its use. This slide kind of illustrates that. The first image in the top-left corner is what's currently being built under Subchapter F. The blue is the .4 FAR, and the yellow is the exemptions. If you add all that up, it averages at .45. We've taken a .1 step from that number to get the .55 of two units and the .65 of three units. If we add more exemptions to it, we are, again, exceeding, and we're, you know, we're double-dipping into the FAR. Thank you for your time. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Fuentes, I'll recognize you for questions.
Thank you. If you could stay, sir. My questions are regarding your presentation. Sorry, I didn't catch your name. Thank you for the modeling. I think having those visuals is super helpful, and, you know, seeing what the exemptions are and what the potential could be with the Home Initiative. One thing I just wanted to highlight from your presentation is, you know, we're getting a lot of questions from the community regarding, you know, how can we ensure that multiple homes would be built on this lot? Can you speak a little bit about the Portland example, that, you know, they changed their zoning capabilities and did changes to their, the Florida area ratio requirement? And based on what you presented today, we saw multiple smaller homes being built with an average price of at least $100,000 less. Is that right?
Yeah. I encourage you to go dig into the report. They just released it. It's their one-year report from implementation of their residential infill project program. And it's great. It shows what had been built previously, and then what was built under the RIP, the Residential Infill Program. They have more metrics than what I included in my presentation, including pricing data, which I didn't really want to touch on. But they're showing that the units that are built outside of their FAR cap previous to the implementation were, on average, 100, it was like $117,000 more than the ones built under the residential infill project. And that's because they allowed more units, but they capped the developable, the developable area with their FAR cap, so it produced more smaller units. And it showed that the most popular typology was a fourplex, actually, which is interesting. Three-quarters of the new development that was going on in Portland after this thing passed was this missing middle typology, and of that, three-quarters was a fourplex.
Good deal. And then my one request is, if we could have both of the AIA and your presentation emailed to us, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
For sure.
Right. Councilmember Vailen and Councilmember Allison Alter.
And going on to Portland, I did look at that report that they had, and honestly, I think Portland's, from a, a housing point of view, a small lot, kind of middle, missing housing point of view is a great example. But my understanding is that Portland built about, I think there were about 700 units or so created under the newly instituted rules. Can you, do you remember what that actual number, can you confirm what the total number was?
I can't. I don't have that information.
There was one on your slide, because you were saying about, like, I think 300 or so was, yeah. Again, just to point out that, I mean, Portland is about a million people, relatively, I mean, we're talking about 700 units in a city of a million people, which, again, is an important but relatively modest impact. Again, I just know that there's these kind of, you know, fears out there about wholesale kind of changes, and the communities that have taken these kinds of steps have seen modest changes. And again, I would go back to our ADU example, where in, I believe, 2015, the City Council legalized ADUs, and we've seen them in a tiny fraction of lots where they're eligible, you know, very few. So anyway, I just wanted to, you know, point that out about the important but relatively modest impact that the Portland zoning changes had. And a semi-related question, do you know what the FAR is in Mueller?
I do not, no. I don't.
Because I've been, in discussions around this, you know, that is kind of our template, that, you know, missing middle, the grouped houses, the kind of different ways that the neighborhood is laid out. We're really looking to kind of export some of that housing typologies into some of our other neighborhoods. And my understanding was that the Mueller FAR, and again, I wish, was around that kind of like, you know, .7 or, you know, .65 area. I don't know if either of y'all can speak to that.
My understanding is that Mueller doesn't have FAR restrictions. However, they have 40 pages of design standards that heavily regulate what gets built there, and much smaller minimum lot sizes, down to 1,500 square feet. So that, I think that it produces, on average, around .7 FAR. But again, if you think about that, those are on much smaller lots, so you tend to get smaller sizes. They have a lot of regulations. They have much smaller setbacks, sometimes as little as five-foot front yard setbacks. They mandate garages in the rear, but that's because there's a lot of alley access. They have height restrictions. So there are a lot of things that govern how houses are built in Mueller, but interestingly, I don't believe there are FAR caps just because of how the other regulations work together.
Got it. Well, thank you. And with regard to the setbacks, what is the justification for, you know, the 25-foot setback, a 15-foot on-the-side setback? Again, I mean, I know a lot of folks really like, you know, that kind of a large expanse of green, green grass, you know, in front of their house, on the side of their house, but, I mean, what, why did we choose such large setbacks? Do y'all have any ideas on that?
I have, I have ideas. And it's not great. You know, if we go back to the origins of zoning, if we take it all back to Euclid, lot sizes have predominantly been used as a form of exclusion. So where do we get our, why is our lot size 8,000 square feet? There's been studies that show 8,000 was the tipping point on what sort of the affluent could buy. So how do you justify 8,000 square feet? You have to say you can't build on half of it. And when did we implement our 8,000-square-foot lot sizes? It was in 1948. And what else happened in 1948? It was the, when we no longer allowed racially exclusive...
Deed restrictions.
Yeah, deed restrictions in 1948. Our lot size used to be 3,000 square feet, and then we outlawed racially exclusionary deed restrictions, and we upped to 8,000 square feet. So if you're asking me, I think that the front yard setback is not, it wasn't put there in the best interest of everybody.
Well, I appreciate that. And I will say, from an aesthetic point of view, I really like neighborhoods where the homes and the porches are a little bit closer. I mean, I think about, you're honestly, parts of older Austin, where, you know, I mean, I think about even like Hyde Park, where, you know, the homes are really kind of right up, you know, 10 feet off the curb, you know, something like that. I think about like a New Orleans, or, you know what I mean, a Galveston even, like a lot of the cities that I find, and I, you know, I can't speak for everybody, obviously, but that many people find, you know, to be the most attractive and the most walkable have relatively small setbacks.
We wholeheartedly agree, and this isn't a mandate to get rid of front yards. If you want a front yard, it's absolutely your yard to have.
And that's a good point, because if you want a 25-foot setback, you can have a 25. No one's preventing you from, you know, setting your house like all the way to the back, kind of hidden in the back. That's a, that's a very good point.
I would, I would also add that having the 25-foot setback, front yard's foot setback, sort of forces you to split your lot in two. So you have a backyard and a front yard. But if you relax that, then you're allowed to have one big backyard or one big front yard. You can actually do more with the space that you have.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Allison Alter.
Thank you. I think I have, I have some questions for staff, but let me start with one for you all. First of all, thank you for your modeling, and I appreciate your goal of helping us to structure this to have smaller houses than where this originally started. I wanted to ask how you think this proposal will get rid of the stealth McMansions? Um, I wanted to ask how you think this proposal will get rid of the stealth McMansions. Um, I'm very concerned that we're adding all this additional FAR and in my district, um, we're just gonna get bigger houses than you can do now because the McMansion rules won't apply and people can have a pool house and they can have a guest house and you're just gonna end up with bigger houses with nobody else living in there. So how does what you're proposing prevent that?
Well, I believe that the, that the cap on one unit set at point four will, uh, it means that any one unit of a two and three unit development is gonna be smaller than the homes that you see being built right now. Currently, the average home is being built at point four or five. So if we set a cap at any one unit, then that first unit that you build is capped at point four, you now have point two-five FAR to use. Um, so even your very largest house in a two and three unit development will be smaller than the average house that's being built right now.
So, so the definition of unit, though, is just like some living space and a bathroom and a sink effectively outside it as best I can tell. So if I wanted to have, you know, a mother-in-law suite, you know, attached to my main house, um, or if I wanted, you know, to have a pool house, as long as it has a bathroom and has a sink for the bar, counts as a unit. Is there anything that prevents me? I mean, there's nothing that prevents me from having a connection between the units. There's nothing... I mean, I see it now that people do this in my district where they can have the second unit and that's a three. And, um, so I just, you know, is there anything in this that prevents somebody who wants to build something bigger at the point six-five? They can call it three units as long as they have enough bathrooms and sinks. Is there anything to, to, to prevent that? To make sure there's multiple, you know, multiple families living in these spaces?
Uh, there isn't anything right now and I think that's a valid point. So I think that would be an interesting, um, piece for council to debate and think through. Um, I would hate to see that become the reason to not move forward with three units, that, you know, the possibility of, let's call them bad actors under that, taking away the possibility of, you know, greater good being possible throughout the city.
Um, I, I understand, I understand that concern, um, but we've also seen what does get built currently under the current rules and have, you know, if you look at some of the census data that we've seen, um, you know, the, the number of, I, I don't have the total number, but the number of people moving into our community that are making over $200,000 a year, um, you know, is enormous. There's, you know, in the last three years, it's something like over 30,000 people. And so the demand for the larger homes is there and the ability to pay for them is there and it's a whole lot easier to make money on them. So I don't know that anybody has to necessarily, um, be nefarious, but the way that the, you know, the rules can be used to make the most profit and if it is more profitable for somebody to build the bigger house, if they have the buyer to do that.
So, so I would say, um, it, to, to this concern, if we look at the market data right now, um, for AB units, the B unit sells much quicker than the A unit. So I'm saying the ADU, the 1,100 square foot secondary unit is the hot commodity. The front unit is, uh, the least desirable. Um, so if we're just looking at what the market data is looking for, people are looking for smaller units. Um, they're, they're generally more affordable. So if we give the option, you could build one gigantic house or you could build three smaller houses, um, even if that was on the table. Uh, the, what the market is looking for is the three smaller houses. So if you're responding to the market, it's gonna be the three smaller houses that are getting built. If, if there is a, a bad actor who comes in and says, you know, "I have all the money in the world and I want to build one giant house and there's, and I'm gonna put doors between my three units," um, they would, you know, they'd be in violation for adding unpermitted doors.
Well, that's what I'm asking is there's nothing in here that says you can't have the doors, though. I mean, that's what I'm asking is...
If it's one unit, if it's, if it's one unit...
A unit doesn't have any definition that says you can't have connecting doors across the units. It just says that you can call anything a unit that has a living space, a bathroom and a sink.
So I think that that would be a good, I think this is a good discussion. Um, I would also say, is there any reason, uh, if there was a, an elderly parent who you wanted to house in your house and you wanted them to have their own unit, but for safety's sake, you wanted to be able to get into their unit, would we make exceptions for that or how? It's not all bad actors.
Uh, again, I'm not saying it's all bad actors, but we, we do know that, I know, under the current rules that we have, that, um, you know, one of the reasons that makes it complicated is that there are so many exemptions and the McMansion 10, people are trying to maximize what, what they can build and we see that happening now, so I can, we can continue that. Um, I'm not sure that, you know, I still think that there's plenty of demand for the larger houses. That's what we're seeing, um, in my district, um, and, and plenty of that even where there are the opportunities to do the two units. So, so I don't know that I agree with that, but I appreciate your perspective. I have other questions for staff unless you want other people to have questions first.
Please, no, let's, let's go ahead and complete those.
Okay. So I have questions for staff. Please, thank you.
Does anybody, I don't have anybody else written down as having questions, so if you'll...
I think we got some questions too.
Okay.
Very much like councilmember Alter, I have questions and/or commentary that particularly pertains to...
Good deal. I'll call on you after she completes her question.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. So for staff, um, you know, a lot has changed since we had a joint public hearing. Um, at that time, the staff proposal was for a duplex and two-unit typology. Now we're just gonna have a two-unit and a three-unit. Um, and at that time, there was no McMansion and no FAR limit for most of the possible permutations, but now we see that Planning Commission has recommended some FAR limits. My question is, what is the staff recommendation for FAR limits? Affordability income impact statement for the previous proposal stated, "Without unit size restrictions, either by subchapter F, i.e. the McMansion standards, or another floor area ratio limitation, the proposed amendments may result in units with similar size and price to current single-family units, which would not achieve the resolution's goal of facilitating the availability of smaller, more diverse housing types for middle-income households." So I'm glad that we can now all agree that size, setting size limits has a role in our preferred policy outcomes, but do our professional staff believe that the FAR recommendation from the Planning Commission is the best way for us to achieve our desired outcomes?
So we, Erica Leek, Planning Department, um, we are still assessing that question. We have, we know we've received it, um, through council Q and A and, and we will get a response back to you as soon as we can.
Thank you. And can staff please clarify? It appears as though the Planning Commission only recommended that these FAR limits apply to units constructed within our current McMansion boundaries. That's how I read item seven on page four of seven in the Proposed Zoning Changes for City Council Meeting December 7th document. Is my understanding that there would be no FAR limits outside of our current McMansion boundaries for these multiple units correct?
That is what is proposed at present, correct.
Okay. Do staff believe this will help us achieve our goals for more smaller units?
The, as you've heard through both presentations, FAR limitations, um, do help control size. So without the FAR limitation, you'd be able to build, um, what would be allowable per building cover, impervious cover, set max, et cetera.
So as you do the modeling that you give us, can we make sure that we're seeing, you know, what does this look like outside of the McMansion area limits? Um, you know, there's some fairly interesting consequences to this, um, for some of the neighborhoods that many of my colleagues represent parts of my, um, district as well where the McMansion, um, restrictions don't apply. Then you have no FAR limits. Um, and as far as I can tell, you would have no, nothing that would be incentivizing smaller houses in those areas.
We can certainly see what, what type of information we can pull together, yes.
And I will just point out that that makes it extremely complicated as you move forward because you're now going into areas that don't currently have FAR limitations and then you're gonna tell them you're gonna have FAR limitations. And so it becomes very complicated to proceed, um, with that. I don't have a solution to it, but I think it is something that we need to anticipate. Um, okay. Um, we also have a Planning Commission recommendation for preservation bonus and a sustainability bonus. What do our professional staff recommend on those two proposals?
So as the manager mentioned, we will provide more information, um, to council before the end of the week on, on our thoughts on those.
Okay. Um, and the Planning Commission recommendation renders obsolete what modeling we did have. Um, so when can we expect modeling, um, to be completed based on the Planning Commission recommendations for the changes to FAR and/or the proposed bonuses? I know there are some models in your presentation today, but it's not clear to me whether those maximize entitlements and really do the full build out.
Uh, so the, the models that are in today's presentation do max out, um, the, the FAR and impervious cover. Um, we don't yet have any modeling, um, that includes the preservation type of bonus. So we'll, we'll see if we can get that done this week.
So you said that it maximizes the entitlements. If I had a flat roof, could I put a balcony on the top of my roof essentially having a fourth level under the rules?
Oh, a balcony on top? That is a good question.
It's not really a balcony, it's a terrace, but, um, can you, I mean, what I'm being told is you can add a whole nother, the rules, what, you know, then you have, um, a fourth story overlooking your home next to you, not just the three-story.
I do not know the answer to that question, so we will, we'll add that to the list. And we have, we have folks who are, who are capturing all of the questions today to make sure we can...
And as you do the modeling, if you also can be clear on what happens when you get rid of the tent, um, to what the houses look like. Um, I think we're still seeing, um, a lot of different models, so I don't know which ones are which and which ones are maximized. But a lot of them have, um, you know, slanted roofs and other things that may not be what we will get, um, once we have a height of 35. So if you have a, a height of 35 and you have no tent, you get very different housing shapes than you get when you have the height of 35 and you have the McMansion tent. And then that has implications for what goes next door to you. Um, so I'd like to make sure that we're looking at that in the models and that if you're able to do, well, terraces on top, that we're seeing what that height looks like and what that means, you know, relative to the smaller houses that exist on the other sides of that.
We'll, we'll see what we can get done.
Okay. Um, it seems like the other cities who've taken similar steps haven't had enough time to fully evaluate unintended consequences. Um, as I alluded to in my conversation with AIA earlier, one of my concerns for unintended consequences is that we will see areas, particularly within my district, where the increase in FAR will be used to build a larger home without necessarily housing additional people. Um, you know, they will use these spaces to have house guests or create a pool house or things like that and we won't actually get any additional people living in these spaces, but we will have bigger houses, which then impacts, um, the costs, et cetera. Do staff have any perspective on how we can mitigate for that potential?
That's something that we are checking to see if there are, if there are good ideas of, of how to do that.
Okay. Um, and then for my colleagues, um, I just want to be clear that what we do now for this phase, if we're moving into a second phase for home, does have big implications for that. So, you know, the, the, the document right now says that there's a minimum square footage for the lot, um, but then it guarantees 2,300 square feet homes. I just want to be clear that even if you had one home on a 2,500 square foot lot, um, with the subdivision, at some point, if you allowed 2,300 square feet on a 2,500 square foot home, now you're talking about a point nine-two FAR. Um, and so there are some implications here, you know, as we're thinking, moving forward since it's been indicated that we want to do a phase two, that there, you know, we need to be thinking about how what we do now impacts, um, what we will, will do later. Um, Mayor, I have some other questions about the WEE code, but I don't know if Councilmember Harper-Madison wants to, to go or other people have questions that are more along these lines.
Why don't you complete your questions and then move on to the other folks?
Okay. Um, so I don't know if the Fire Marshal is here.
The Fire Marshal's not here.
Okay. Um, so I don't know the best way to do this, but, um...
With respect to the Fire Marshal or questions, if any, any question in the Q and A, we'll get it to the right department to make sure we provide that information as timely as we are able to do it, so that you can have adequate time to inspect and then ask additional questions if we haven't quite gotten.
Okay. I mean, some of these I would prefer that they have to answer, you know, you know, I mean...
If you didn't let people know that you were gonna ask questions of the Fire Marshal...
I, I understand that. They were, they were present for the Planning Commission, so I assume that they would be present.
Well, we, we, we have a meeting that that, I guess I'll be there at that time of our meeting. This is a work session and, and so we had specific things that were gonna be provided as part of the work session.
Okay. So, um, why don't we go to other people and I'll come back, write my questions.
All right. Councilmember Harper-Madison and then Councilmember Fuentes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the recognition. I, like I said, I primarily have comments, um, not so many questions, actually, literally just one question. I, I basically wanted to make sure to, to say thank you to staff, you two, Ms. Leek, for the presentation. I'd also like to thank our colleague, Councilmember Poole, for, um, for championing this effort. As we've heard, it's a critical and important effort. Also wanted to give a nod for a little, um, side-eye action. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gannon. Uh, you said you have ideas, but I don't think what you presented, by the way, the information that you presented are in fact ideas, they're facts. Um, and that's one of the things that we can never fall short of is recognizing that a lot of the ways that we've arrived at this place is the fact that our city, um, is unique in very many ways, but exclusionary zoning, where people play the game of hide the ball and make the city for a certain group and/or class, and more often than not, both people is how we got here. Um, and so to your point, I, my hope is that we don't fall short of what we could do because there could potentially be the opportunity for there to be some, um, some folks who don't operate with the desire to move forward as quickly as possible. Housing shortages are not exclusive to our fair, capital, unique city. They're universal, global. Singapore has housing shortages, Tokyo has housing shortages, New York, Seattle, Sheboygan. I mean, it doesn't matter where you go, these conversations are universal. And so I appreciate that we are, in a lot of ways, the kind of city that is so committed to being, you know, at the forefront of coming up with unique solutions, um, to what we have described over and over again. Um, this isn't, you know, cliche. It is a crisis and I appreciate that we have arrived at this place where we are coming up with real, practical, possible solutions. Um, so thank you to everybody who's contributed to the dialogue thus far. Um, I recognize that this is not an easy task that we are undertaking as a council, as a body, as a city. The conversations will be difficult and anything that's good or worth having, I'm certain there's some parents in the room. Um, I have a 13-year-old who is not especially easy right now, but when she's 25, the fact that she made it hard on me to parent her today will mean that people won't talk her into doing dumb things. So it's worth doing the hard work to know that on the other side of it, she's gonna be a strong person who advocates for herself and what's right. Um, that said, after serving on this body for, um, over five years now and as a native Austinite, I am very familiar with this conversation, both as a policymaker and as a person, um, just trying to live in this city. And I already picked out my grandmama name. I think a lot of y'all know that I'm gonna be Big Mama. I don't know what size I will be when I'm Big Mama, but I will be Big Mama to somebody. And I want my, my grandbabies and their babies to be able to live in this city that I call home. Um, they will be fifth-generation Austinites and I want them to be able to live here. I am familiar with these conversations. I'm familiar with the level of difficulty that these conversations have taken on and I encourage hard conversations. Um, our chief of staff, Sharon Mays, famously says that there's always something good that comes on the other side of a hard conversation. That means everybody's being candid and everybody's sharing information. It's critical to have the information to make good choices. Um, I think we have tried, on multiple occasions and in many, many ways, to improve access to housing. I am hopeful that this and other initiatives that we pursue, um, will be one of our many successes. To be clear, colleagues, staff and to the general public, many Austinites, myself included, believe that these particular code changes will help to expand the amount of attainable housing opportunities, um, in our city. And that's for a more diverse group of people based on, uh, a number of... And that's for a more diverse group of people based on a number of, of factors to consider. Here are some startling statistics that I'd like to share with you and things that I'm considering as we sort of move through this dialogue. Over half of four-person households in this city, the city of Austin, have a median family income of $93,450 or less. And yet only 4% of homes sold in this city in the first half of 2023 were considered affordable to them. I recognize words like affordable are relative, but given the parameters that we use to make that assessment, only 4% of homes sold in our city were considered affordable to those folks. In District One alone, there is a 55.2% shortage of homes that are considered affordable to the four-person household at income levels of $93,450 or less. We must use every single solitary tool to address the crisis. As a nation, globally, housing shortages are absolutely universal because there is no silver bullet. There's no silver bullet policy, there's no silver bullet body, there's no silver bullet city, there is no silver bullet to address crises. And frankly, demand, the Home Initiative is but one of many solutions that we actually have a chance of enacting. And I for one find that encouraging. It provides opportunities for first-time homebuyers, for our workforce, to be able to live in the city that they serve in. I so frequently, you know, I'm an early riser and I watch folks with their vests and hardhats walking down my block. It's still dark outside when they're on their way to work in downtown Austin. They park on the other side of the highway and walk across the highway to work in downtown Austin, to serve us, to build our city, to make our downtown core what it is and continues to become. They have to take great strides in order to do that. Those people that make those beds fresh and crisp and run those linens through those big machines and make certain that your crepes are hot and fresh in the morning at the various hotels around town, that hot cup of joe you get at the JW Marriott, they have to live somewhere. If they're going to serve our city, they should be able to live in it also. I, I'd like to quote a friend of mine, she's got a, an initiative that she's working on called, you know, Austinites will love this, considering how much we love yoga, it's called Nah, I'm a Say. And that's in reference to her, like me, and many other Austinites recognizing that empowering multi-generational housing, multi-generational opportunities in this city to maintain assets like land, nah, I'm a stay. But you have to be able to stay with assets like land. I think that especially resonates with our East Austin neighbors who frankly have always and continue to feel threatened by displacement. That word opportunity that I keep using, it's so important because so many of our neighbors and constituents feel a distinct lack of opportunity in Austin today and always. Frankly, I for one believe we can do better. As they plan for their futures, I'd like to say for great gratitude to our colleagues in Districts Two and Three and Four for working with Team D1 on addressing three critical additions to the Home Initiative that I personally believe must be incorporated alongside those of the Planning Commission and, you know, the housing professionals who are contributing to this effort if we are to create opportunities for all of Austin. If we're going to make the promise of home, of the Home Initiative available to all Austinites, then we must also all help to provide access to capital. For existing property owners to maintain ownership or redevelop their land, may multi-generational families in D1, or many rather, are already tapped out financially. Selling out feels like their only opportunity. Councilmember Velasquez, I know you know what I'm talking about, and I'm thankful for your office working so hard towards taking that into consideration and that recognition as we work on new programs for families who are already home, or landowners, and they need to be able to continue to use that asset as just that, an asset. And equitable infrastructure, planning that addresses both historic inequities, like those that started prior to frankly, but continue to occur in those deed restriction incidences like in 1948, historic inequities with any new demand as new housing expands. This is probably the largest concern that I hear from most of our constituents in District One. And incorporating changes into our infrastructure planning that takes that equity lens and identifies any new remedies for neighborhoods adding housing is critical. I'm talking water mains, I'm talking rethinking narrow streets for emergency access, I'm talking about lessening the cost burden on working families who frankly may not have the means otherwise to use our city services. And lastly, for now, I appreciate that plans like these, they're living and breathing, you know, it's not going to be static. And I, I, I think it's, it's critical that we recognize that plans like these are going to have to be nimble and are going to have to grow. I mean, the one thing that we can count on in this city is that we will always continue to grow, change, and evolve. That won't stop. That's the one thing we can guarantee everybody in the conversation. Education and outreach to existing property owners at risk of displacement on what the true value of their property is and how they can access the resources that we hope to bring forward to neighborhoods like theirs. There's a ton of great examples for programs like this. I'm excited to support East Austin and our East Austin council members in offering ideas and direct solutions and potential options to city staff to address those concerns with real solutions. So thank you again, Councilmembers Poole and City Staff. I think we all recognize this won't be an easy lift and nothing worth having is, so we have to get it right at the start and move forward with really solid foundation. So that's it for the commentary. The one question I did have, and I think we might have posed this to staff already, and it's around AIS considerations, and I think that's probably Director Trulove's question. Good morning.
Good morning.
So our office has received multiple emails, phone calls, and, you know, and our attendance of neighborhood meetings, repeated questions about the city's affordability impact statement. So specifically, it cited that several issues with the home code changes that could have a negative impact on affordability. I'm hoping that you're able to address those initial concerns and help us to confirm, most especially for our constituents and, you know, as we move forward with this planning process, whether the Planning Commission's amendments have addressed those to date? And if that is not in fact the case, what considerations should we as a body be taking moving forward?
Sure, thank you, Rosie Trulove, the Director of the Housing Department. So overall, the affordability impact statement released by the Housing Department was positive for, for the, this particular suite of amendments, but there were some policy considerations that we outlined and some concerns that we outlined. Substantively, the Planning Commission changes have helped to address those, and we have answered that question in the question, the Q and A process for this body. But we will extract that information and polish it up and give to you as a memo by the end of the week, so that you have that to more readily share with your constituents.
I appreciate that. And just to, just for, so we can make certain to take the proper channels for following up, is there anybody in particular that John and our office should follow up with by the end of the week?
It will, it will come out from, from me through to everyone, so that it can be used by everyone.
Awesome, thank you, I appreciate it. And then, you know, so I believe that when the public does receive that update, that it'll help both with, you know, honest misunderstandings and I, I think we can never overlook the fact that sometimes the misinformation, though unfortunate, is intentional. And so I, I think it will help on, in multiple ways. So thank you, we look forward to that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Fuentes, then Councilmember Kelly, and then I'll come back to Councilmember Velasquez, and then Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Harper-Madison, it's, it's wonderful to have you back, your voice has been missed, and I just really appreciate you being here with us today and for your commentary. Thank you. Colleagues, there are a couple items I did want to highlight, one on behalf of Councilmember Codri and myself, but just wanted to lend my support for an issue that Councilmember Allison Alter raised regarding whether or not we should extend the Florida area ratio requirements to the entire city. You know, my district, District Two, is not within the McMansion area, so I would be particularly interested to better understand the impacts of not having FAR requirements in, in the outer parts of our, of our city. And then also, I know that, I'm also interested in the other Planning Commission recommendation of removing the 1,100 square foot size limit for the second unit that the AIA also supports. Not sure if our legal team is working on incorporating that into, into an amendment. And so, and then also want to thank Councilmember Velasquez for your leadership on bringing forward an IFC related to ADU financing. Both you and I have had several community meetings this week regarding the, the concern of not having financing available for our, our homeowners and our eastside communities particularly. And so it's been really wonderful and welcoming to work with you and Councilmember Harper-Madison and Councilmember Vela's office on that proposal, and I look forward to bringing that for the full council consideration. Colleagues, on behalf of Councilmember Codri and myself, I want to highlight two changes to ensure preservation of original homes as part of the Home Initiative that were recommended by the Planning Commission and that we just received a briefing on from city staff. We're very grateful for Preservation Austin and the Austin Infill Coalition and their work with the Planning Commission Work Group and our council offices to get this simple, yet effective historic preservation incentives. Both the historic and sustainability bonuses provide an incentive to property owners to keep the original home on the lot if they choose to participate in the Home Initiative. And so we, as part of the Home Initiative, we want to make sure that there's an incentive for people to keep their existing home, to maintain the fabric of the community, and to also not contribute to landfill by knocking them down. Both of these bonus programs are a wonderful addition to Councilmember Poole's Home Initiative, helping us preserve community character, history, and utilizing our existing housing stock to its fullest. We are happy that city staff is ensuring that the ordinance language incorporates the preservation best practices, and my understanding that will be coming forward to us in the coming week. Councilmember Codri would like to make a motion that ensures that the Historic Preservation Office coordinates with the Development Services staff on development review and implementation of the preservation bonus to ensure its maximum potential. Likewise, my team and I are working with city staff regarding the sustainability bonus.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, and thank you staff for the Q and A. I appreciated the responses to the questions that I asked. Councilmember Allison Alter, I wanted to let you know that I asked questions about the Wildland Urban Interface that you may be interested in, since you had some earlier. But I do also have a few questions. I'm wondering if staff could speak to any types of restrictions on additional short-term rentals that might be included in this proposal so that there's clarity in the community? It's one of the questions that keeps coming up when I'm out at community meetings.
Trish Link with the Law Department. The Planning Commission gave some additional direction related to wanting city staff and the council to take up the issue of short-term rentals sooner rather than later. So the proposal that we were, that we are, sorry, the ordinance that we're drafting would not have any of the short-term rental restrictions that is current, in current code, except for the standard short-term rental regulations that apply to all of our properties. The Law Department's recommendation is to take up the issue of short-term rentals in a holistic way and do all of it at one time instead of a little bit here and there, which is why we're, that is a recommendation from the Law Department to take it out of the current code.
Okay, so that's more of a long-term goal to try and fix the short-term rental situation? Is that something that requires action from council, or is that something that the legal department is going to be working in conjunction with the Code Department on?
We will work with the City Manager's Office and DSD on what proposals we would, we could recommend to the council moving forward, and then maybe that would help us in move this conversation forward.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I do have a few more questions, so you may want to stick around. Thank you. I've heard questions about occupancy limits and if they violate the Fair Housing Act or if they do not. So do Austin's current occupancy limits violate the Fair Housing Act?
So, the city has two occupancy limits, and I only just say this for a little bit more context. We have our, what I call our zoning occupancy limit, which is what you would be removing if the ordinance passes as proposed on December 7th. And that is, that regulates the number of unrelated individuals that can reside in a home. We still have square footage minimums for bedrooms, which helps ensure health and safety. This action doesn't touch that. Cities across the country have what I call the zoning occupancy limit, the number of unrelated individuals that reside in a home. Traditionally, when cities get into trouble, it is because they have refused to grant a reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act, which has to do with individuals who need an increase in occupancy to enjoy, to live in a housing of their choice. So what someone might say is a sober living home, if it needs to have more than six unrelated, we do grant reasonable accommodations, we have a process in our code, so we are compliant in that respect. Another place cities could get into trouble is from the, what we call is disparate impact, meaning the effect of the regulation has, is discriminatory. We don't have that situation here in Austin. There's been some discussion about familial status, and our code does not discriminate on the basis of familial status. Familial status is a household that has a child residing with it. Our ordinance does not prohibit that. In fact, actually, our focus is households with children, on families, as opposed to a number of unrelated individuals.
Okay, so you sort of walked right into my next question, which is, does removing occupancy limits affect the registration and inspections done for vulnerable populations such as those that are disabled in group homes, or the elderly, or halfway houses, or even juvenile congregate living spaces? Are those occupancy limits, the removal of that, will it affect regular inspections being done? My concern is that those populations that I listed are very vulnerable and they are susceptible to abuse, exploitation, and neglect. And without regular inspections being done because of the removal of occupancy limits, I would be concerned that bad things could happen.
So the way our program here in Austin works is we have a general rooming and boarding home licensing process. And if you hit the threshold of more than six unrelated individuals in a household, then you are subject to the licensing requirement. That is kind of typically what we use, we would kind of, from a use, a true use standpoint, would be group residential. We have provisions in the city code for family home and group home. However, there are some legal concerns with those uses and, which I would not want to get into here, but there are some legal issues with that, so that's why we focus on group residential. If group residential remains at six unrelated individuals, or more than six unrelated, then we will have a de facto occupancy limit because group residential is not allowed in our single, most single-family zones. Going forward, if the council approves the change, the change to group residential to 16 unrelated individuals, plus you have food service from a third party, that would mean that any homes that have less than that number would not be licensed. So we do have some sober homes that may fall under that, that may be less than 16, and so they would no longer be licensed if they are required to have a license today.
Is that something that we could potentially bring an amendment forward? Because I think that that's one of the unintended consequences, that, that we definitely want to protect those vulnerable populations, and I might like to speak with you further about that outside of this space currently.
If we could talk online, offline, that would be great.
Thank you. And then have there ever been any, I say ever, have there been any environmental impact studies done related to the Home Initiative passing currently that we're aware of? Have, has the city started to look into that? Where has any progress been done on it?
We have not completed any environmental impacts. Yes.
Okay, so I did see a, a news report recently where the author's office had spoken to the fact of looking into that. Do you have an update about that? Okay, thank you. I'll send you a link. I'll send you a link. Thank you, yeah. And then, I guess this is another question for Trish, and it's my last one, I really appreciate this. The community has been flooding our office with questions. I know that the city does not get involved with deed restrictions or HOAs, but could you explain historically why that is and why other cities across the country maybe do that where we don't as a city? Or what the, I guess, reasoning for that is?
So, deed restrictions and HOAs are private agreements, they're private, they're individuals who move to a property who agree to be bound by private restrictions. So it's not something that the city of Austin mandates, it's not something that the city of Austin requires or regulates. It is between those two parties. So if someone doesn't comply with their deed restrictions or their HOA requirements, they are, they're not in trouble with the city of Austin, they would be in trouble with their HOA or their neighbors. And so because those are private agreements, they aren't city regulations, we are not in the conversation, we are not part of that. There is, there is a provision in state law that allows a city such as Houston that does not have zoning to enforce private deed restrictions. We are not a city such as Houston, we don't meet the threshold of the number of residents, but two, we have zoning regulation. So in order to follow that path, we would actually need to stop regulating zoning.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Velazquez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank Councilmember Fuentes and Councilmember Natasha Harper-Madison for their kind words, also to also say that it's so great to have you back, Ms. Harper-Madison, Councilmember Harper-Madison. There is no question that Austin's housing stock needs diversification. We need a range of solutions to this problem. There is no one-size-fits-all. I believe home represents an opportunity to address our missing middle housing, and it's undeniable that our lower and middle-income families are being squeezed out of neighborhoods they have lived in for generations. With that in mind, and with the support of my colleagues, I will be bringing forward an item that will help people who may not have cash on hand to build these additional units on their lot. This item will ask the city manager to develop a program that enables access to down payment assistance to help those on lower or moderate incomes build or renovate their homes to include ADUs now that HUD has made FHA loans available for ADUs. We'll also be asking that communication and marketing materials be made available and targeted to these communities so that people who would benefit most have greater access to them. Importantly, we want to make sure that units built using this program are long-term affordable housing for Austinites. So if someone uses the program, they would be ineligible to apply for a short-term rental license. I want to touch on something that my colleague said earlier, and this is, while we are growing opportunity, we need to ensure that we are growing opportunity for all, and I really appreciate your words to that extent. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allison Alter?
Thank you. Councilmember Velazquez, I look forward to your resolution. You're probably aware of this, but several of us have been involved with resolutions related to ADUs over the many years to address the capital issue and the memos that have come out about that and the other pieces are something that can be built upon for that work, if you're, if you're not already aware of those. With respect to the WUI and the Fire Marshal, I guess right now, I'm hoping that I'll get a chance to meet individually with the Fire Marshal, but for now, I'd like to ask staff how the Fire Marshal has been involved in evaluating the proposals since the Planning
Staff has been in communication with the Fire Marshal's office, discussing the various proposals, including tiny homes, et cetera, and there are a number of responses to council questions in the council Q and A relating to this, so there's a little bit more information there.
Is there written, do you get written feedback from the Fire Marshal? Like, how are they consulted, you know?
We've, we've both had meetings, and, and they've helped provide responses to council Q and A.
Okay, I'll take a look again at the Q and A. I do have concerns on fire risks based on some of what we heard at the Planning Commission with respect to the occupancy limit changes and what that means for the structures and how things change across structures, whether it's the building code or the, I think there's a change depending on the number of units of whether you have to do fire suppression proposals, et cetera, and I want to make sure that we have some clarity on that. So I'll probably ask some more questions on that. And with respect to the WUI code, my understanding that the WUI code in areas that are in the Wildland Urban Interface requires proper spacing among the units because the whole point is to avoid ignition from one structure to another. So I'm trying to understand how that plays out, if someone can speak more to that in conjunction with this and areas that have.
Yeah, good morning. Jose Roy, Director for DSD. The technical code issues are still in place. These changes will not change anything like that. So when we look at the plan review side, we apply all the technical codes that have to be applied to. That includes building code, residential code, that includes separation between units, firewall if they are required, so those are still in place. So those life safety issues will still have to be in place regardless of how many units you put in place.
Thank you, but the, in terms of the secondary exit, you know, this is allowed in areas that only have one exit in and out into the area, which are a whole number of places around the city because we didn't used to require a second access for developments. So this would be allowed in those areas as long as they were SF1 or SF2.
It is maintained, yes. As long as they comply with all the requirements for the technical side, yes, they will be allowed.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, Mayor Protim?
Thank you for the recognition, Mayor, and I appreciate the questions. Councilmember Kelly asked about deed restrictions. I know we get those questions a lot in District 8. Could someone speak to any sorts of other settlement agreements, and if those are also private, you know, legal, legal discussions that have court case settlements? Are those affected by this? Would those still be maintained? For instance, Circle C and the Bradley Settlement Agreement specifically?
So we have, we would be looking at every particular time that it comes up. So if the regulate, if the settlement agreement and the city is a party to it, so my assumption and your question is that we are a party to it. If it does regulate use, or address use, or the number of units, we will have to look at whether or not those have to be amended, but it would really be on a per settlement basis, and don't know how many we have. I'm hoping not many, to be quite frank, but I, that is one, and then when I know there's probably a couple others.
Thanks. I know that's a special case scenario, but my understanding so far is that if there are court case decisions that, that parties have signed on to and are bound by, that this change in code would not dissolve that court case agreement in any way. So if you could just let me know if that's not correct, that's my understanding, and I anticipate moving forward with that being the understanding of those particular court settlements.
If I might interrupt, just because I happen to have a little bit of knowledge about something you specifically brought up. If the city entered into a settlement agreement or entered into an agreement, it is an agreement. And I think it would be very difficult to then come in and somehow say, many years later, that the agreement's not in place. So I hope that the answer that we just given doesn't create the fear that it created, at least in this chair. So we need to get an answer, a clear answer. The city can't just enter into an agreement and then
Unilaterally say.
Unilaterally come back and say, eh, we're not going to enforce it anymore because of some other change.
I recognize that. I think that part of my answer has to do with not all of our settlement agreements address the same issues in the Land Development Code. And so I would have to look at a particular agreement to see, does it even get into this issue? But if we have a settlement agreement and that is the rules of the game that everyone has been playing by, we will continue to follow that. The question is though, that does come next, is if those property owners want to change something, and we have seen that from time to time over the years. So that's also another component of, of my response.
Okay, let's talk a little bit more offline, but my understanding is how the mayor laid it out, which is that if we are one of the parties in a court settlement that we can't unilaterally say, we're going to do something different.
That is correct.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll draw folks' attention to, when people submit an application about the type of zoning change or the type of site plan that they want to put in, you know, in on a plot of land that they own, that there is now a line on there that says people have to check with their deed restrictions and their HOAs to make sure they're in full compliance with those agreements. That was something that I brought in 2019, 2020, when we were having discussions about LDC rewrite, and we had gotten the question from HOAs that have specific restrictions, and, you know, approached that question many times from folks. And it is, the city zoning is, is a public decision, and the private agreements between property owners and their HOAs is their own private covenants, essentially. And so we have asked people along the way to say, can you make sure that when people come and they want to change how they're using the land that they own, that they are doing their own homework and their own research to look at HOA restrictions and deed restrictions in their, you know, in the paperwork they sign when they buy their home? And so although the city does not maintain those and does not enforce those, we have made our efforts on this end to ensure that folks are doing their due diligence to understand what the expectations are when they buy a house and they buy a property in a place that has an HOA with deed restrictions. So I really appreciate that conversation coming up. And I'll just generally say, you know, I appreciate getting more information on how Portland has tried to tackle some of their land use issues. I was able to visit there in 2019 and had, had done a little research about how they have a set geographic footprint that council decides that says we will not extend beyond these boundaries without it coming back to council and saying that we are moving into areas that are vegetated and forested. And so it's interesting to see that now that our footprint as a city of Austin is contained without people voluntarily deciding to annex into the city of Austin, that we are facing similar limitations. So we've got to get smarter about how we use our land, about where we allow gentle density, and how we incentivize for people to be able to do gentle infill types of developments. None of these regulations are going to stop rich people from doing rich people things, but we can make sure that the average person has the ability to build a life and maintain a life here in Austin, and to be close to the people that they know and love. And I think that's the focus of the home initiative, is to try to make more flexibility possible for people, because there are folks in town that want to build small units, they want to build triplexes, they want to be a part of the change that keeps people here in Austin that helped build this town. But at the end of the day, there are some folks that are going to have more means, and I want to make sure this city is not just for wealthy people to be able to buy land here and to be able to buy homes. And I think that's where we need to allow for more flexibility and more ability for people to have smaller footprints where they want them. So this isn't about mandating that people have to build something. If people want to build those large houses with large setbacks, they're, they're going to be able to do it to a certain extent, but there are people out there who want smaller units, they want walkable, bikeable, connected communities, they want porches where you can walk your dog and say hi to your neighbor. So we've got to make sure that we are allowing that type of flexibility in our code as the city continues to price people out. I think this council is very set on making sure that people are here, they can stay here and build a life, and I hope that we keep that in mind as we move forward with some of the discussions about specific regulations.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Before I call on Councilmember Poole to close, I want to make sure that if anybody has something, we're gaining new information, this has been a productive work session where we get additional information. The Planning Commission has just made its decisions. There may be amendments that will be coming forward that people aren't prepared to lay out today, which is understandable. What I would suggest is that as you have those, though, please go ahead and put them on the message board, even if they're a rough draft, so that people will have an opportunity to look at that and, and ask questions about it in anticipation of what I think will be a meeting where we're going to have quite a bit of public participation would be my guess, and then our discussion will, will work a little more smoothly. Councilmember Vela?
Just a couple of follow-up questions, if you don't mind.
Sure, sure.
And this question is for, for staff, going off of the FAR discussion. District 4 is, is half in the McMansion tent area and half not in the McMansion tent area. So I kind of have a, I think, a little bit of a, of a unique view of the situation. And just anecdotally, there are more McMansions in North Loop, let's say, than there are in Georgian Acres. You know, again, people have the ability to build without any FAR limits whatsoever in Georgian Acres, but my sense would be that the majority of, you know, 3,000 square foot, 4,000 square foot homes are happening actually within the, the covered McMansion area. Any, any thoughts on that from a staff perspective? I mean, are we seeing these kind of really large homes out in the kind of periphery outside of the McMansion area? I'm not, just anecdotally, I'm not, but District 10, I would defer to, obviously, Councilmember Allison Alter on that.
I'm trying to, I know we've gathered data on a number of things. I don't think we have data in that particular way, or at least not that comes to mind immediately. So, so I don't know offhand.
Okay, I was just wondering, in terms of as we address the problem, I guess I would like to know if, if there is a problem to be addressed before we kind of, you know, dive in and, and try to regulate in the area. And then I think these two might be more for, for law, for Trish, but the STRs, my sense on the STRs is, and again, this is based on the federal court rulings that have come down that have, you know, invalidated various kind of portions of that, is that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this is not an area that we dug into a bunch yet with my staff, but the, the more we kind of micro-regulate, we seem to get in trouble with our kind of, you know, we, in other words, the court seems to be wanting us to adopt a broader STR regulation that treats everybody the same way, as opposed to the way we have been doing it, where we kind of create tiers based on, you know, whether it's owner occupied or those kinds of things. Is that, I mean, is that a fair assessment?
What we have learned from court decisions is that our distinction between owner occupied and non-owner occupied are problematic, and the court, so for that reason, staff has actually been applying the STR regulations consistent between non-owner occupied and owner occupied STRs.
And in terms of STR regulations, any potential ones that, you know, could, would be attached to, let's say, you know, this ordinance? Can we distinguish then, kind of, if, if we're getting into kind of the, you know, by zoning types and by kind of different, kind of like I said, microcategories as we cut the, the lines, you know, fine, we're treating similarly situated people differently based on kind of not, you know, not really kind of obvious and apparent distinctions? Are there concerns with that?
If council wants to address short-term rental regulations as applies to two-unit and three-unit developments, we would need to figure out what that looks like. We have a, we have three different types today. We have the non-owner occupied, owner occupied, and multifamily. And this would not be multifamily, so it would be whether or not we would say type one or type two. Anything that we, anything that the council adopts, we would have a recommendation that would be in line with what the courts are telling us we can do.
Okay, I appreciate that, and again, I know that the entire area is, is a real, you know, kind of a mess of decisions and rules and whatnot right now, and I, I guess I hesitate to go into it on a piecemeal basis like that. My sense would be I'd much rather address it comprehensively in a thoughtful and timely manner, as opposed to like throw something onto this for Thursday, you know? Again, those are just my, kind of, my, my instincts on it. And then finally, the deed restrictions. And then finally, the deed restrictions. You know, there's some deed restrictions that are reasonable. I'd say the vast majority of them are very strange about, you know, how big the house can be and, and how the front-facing this and that. Like, there are kind of micro-design rules in a lot of the, the, actually, at least the deeds that I'm familiar with. But I do understand that at some point, a deed restriction will expire if they are kind of, you know, in other words, if a certain percentage of homes in an area are violating deed restrictions from 70 years ago that are not really relevant today. Then at some point, the courts will start basically kind of ignoring those deed restrictions. Do you have any sense of, of when that is or what the law is around that area? Like, when deed restrictions essentially become, die?
There is, in the case law, there is a threshold generally where the courts will say, this has been disregarded long enough that it's no longer, no one's following it, so it really doesn't apply. And the courts will say that, that the property owner's not going to be subject to that. There's not a bright line on that rule. I think it really would probably depend on what the thing is. And so, yeah, there's not a good answer I could give you that's definitive. But yes, we have seen in the cases that the courts at some point say you've, you haven't enforced your restriction, you no longer get to enforce your restriction.
It's more like an estoppel, not quite an equitable situation, but more like an estoppel situation.
Yeah, yeah. And with regard to the deed restrictions then, other than, than, you know, the court kind of saying, no, you know, we're going to choose to ignore them, is there any way to end deed restrictions? And again, I'm thinking because there were a lot of, I'm thinking about Windsor Park, which has some very strange deed restrictions that have to do really more, they're almost home design, you know, where you can only have it within here and the houses on this street can have to be a minimum of, you know, 700 square feet and the next street. Again, they're, they're not really deed restrictions as they're kind of commonly known. They're, they're almost like design regulations that are written in as deed restrictions. But is there any way to lift those? Is there any way to end deed restrictions other than, you know, a court deciding that they've expired or they're, you know, estoppelled out?
The property owners who are subject to those restrictions can agree to change those restrictions. The City of Austin would not have a role, though.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Poole, you recognize to close.
Thanks, Mayor. And I just wanted to do a round of appreciation and thank yous. My thanks to all of the city staff who have contributed to the home effort, in particular, planning staff and leadership for their tremendous work in getting us to this point. My deep appreciation to two valuable community partners, AIA, who have generously devoted their talents to extensive analysis and modeling and to Preservation Austin for helping maintain the fabric of our communities and advocating for sustainable growth. These two groups are working tirelessly with my team and me to work on amendments to home with the Planning Commission Working Group that will make the program more successful. I am deeply grateful for all of your inspired efforts. Finally, I want to acknowledge the extraordinary work of the Planning Commission Working Group on those key amendments that reflect community input and that help meet the goals of the Home Initiative to promote smaller, single-family homes and provide options for homeowners. These amendments reflect two of my key priorities, ensuring smaller structures and preserving existing homes. I really appreciate the conversation, Mayor, that we've had today, particularly the portions revealing the 30-year trend toward larger, single homes, a trend that is incentivized by our current code. Considering where we are in our housing emergency and the lack of starter homes and options for homeowners, I am very grateful that we are working together to change that. And to draw a fine point on that, we are not starting from zero here. This work to encourage more homes in our neighborhoods is hampered by the current code, namely, the ironically-named McMansion ordinance, which promotes the big house trend. I, for one, am interested in undertaking the work on Subchapter F so that we can prevent McMansions, not encourage them. And I have been speaking to this point pretty energetically for the greater part of this year and last. So I'm looking forward to December 7 and to considering the good amendments that have been laid out by staff and our partners so that Home Phase 1 meets our goals to get smaller, more attainable homes in our neighborhoods. We still have a lot of work ahead of us, but I'm looking forward to December 7 for the specifics that are contained in Phase 1. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. And thank you to all the council. Good, good discussion. Thank you to staff too, because we know that you've been working hard and are going to be working hard as we move forward. So thank you very much for, for the role that you're playing and, and also the partners that have been involved and the Planning Commission for the time it's taken so far. With that, we will